I think Avril circulated an email about the request from Novant to provide a letter of support. We provided a similar letter of support for Advent. So this would basically be sort of us communicating, you know, we think they're both strong applications, would both bring value, and so we would be basically expressing support for both of them. So are there any questions or concerns about that request from Novant?
No.
Okay. All right, is everyone supportive of moving ahead on that?
We need more competition.
Okay, agreed, all right, then we will move ahead with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, terrific. All right, next up, strategic planning. So Rafael, are you kicking us off on this?
Yes, sir.
Terrific.
All right, well, thank you, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity today. So this will be our second work session with you all on the strategic plan. Not the last work session, but it's the second one. So I will be here just going through the slide deck for a little bit, it'll be pretty quick. And then the vast majority of the balance of the time, Heather Parkinson will lead you all through facilitation with the sticky wall and with the sticky dots.
Sticky wall.
So we're aiming to do three things today. First is a recap of community staff input, followed by an update on the work that's happened since our last work session with you all, followed by a participatory work session. There are on your desk two documents you all can add to your binders. The first is a complete report on community and employee input. So every comment that we collected is in here, as well as the full analysis. So over 1,000 responses, but there's also a lot of analysis there, thematic stuff on the front end. And then the PowerPoint for today. So we worked with Cape, as well as the Office of Equity and Human Rights, on a pretty robust community employee inputs plan. And we did 19 events and had a public input page on online survey. Received over 1,000 responses. We went across the county, we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We also attempted to collect demographic information as possible. But you can see that 27% of our responses were related to growth and development. 17% were related to health and public safety, education, economic development, both at 15%. Environment and energy, 11% of responses, and then other responses, around 14%. And then also in the report, and I think on the next slide, we talked about the equity component to it. So 19 events held in nine different zip codes across the county. Six of these facilitations were bilingual facilitations, offered with live English-Spanish interpretation onsite. The vast majority of these sessions were us going to community meetings, so going to where the community was. So a big piece of gratitude and appreciation for all those community groups that allowed us to come and spend time at their meetings. We also had a variety of both in-person virtual sessions where individuals could come to us. We had 407 total participants. 253 of those participants did share with us demographic information. So you can see the demographic information there. I would say a relatively good breakdown in terms of diversity within the community. And in the report, you can see all the different locations we went to and the breakdown by location. So when we did that facilitation, we asked community members to reflect to what Buncombe County looked like five to 10 years ago. We asked them to think about what has changed in our community in those five to 10 years. Then we asked them to reflect on what changes or obstacles, opportunities have you had personally because of those changes? And with all that in mind, what would you like to see the Board of Commissioners prioritize over the next five years? And then we put up the development areas that you all created at the last work session. We asked them to put their ideas by work area, and that's how we characterize them. So what we'll show you next are the feedback trends. We'll show the first, the 10 most common trends we saw for our employee input sessions, as well as our 10 most common trends we saw for our community input sessions. So for employees, it was affordable housing, affordable childcare, a living wage, better public transportation, and mental health services were the five most commonly listed ones. You can see up here representative examples of those comments. So those are real comments from our employees. They're reflective of what we generally heard from our employees. The next five for our employees were education and teacher pay, community and public safety, environmental sustainability, homelessness, and support services, followed by infrastructure and road improvements. As we move into our community feedback, the top five there were affordable housing and costs of living, which was by far and away the most common one, followed by transportation, public transit, followed by supporting teachers and students, lane use and zoning, healthcare access and services. Then the next five were support for local businesses, environmental conservation and renewable energy, public safety and law enforcement, supporting the unhoused, and supporting access for underserved communities. So before I move on to the next piece of this, are there any questions, comments, reflections on the employee and community feedback? And Heather will be weaving this into the facilitation later. If you all have anything here before I move on.
So with the employee feedback, are you asking them for like their personal perspective rather than their professional perspective?
We asked for both. So from their, I mean, for the community-facing comments you see there, those are going to be, I think, a mix of their personal and professional perspective. We additionally asked them to give their feedback on our foundational area, the way we do business. And we'll be bringing those to you at a later time. We're working on that on kind of a separate track.
Thank you.
So at our last touch point with you all back in April, you all gave us the development areas, five development areas you would like us to focus on, as well as your key priorities within each of those development areas. What we did was we brought together subject matter experts from across the county, and we asked them to work on those priorities. And what we asked them to do is for each of those development areas, in a manner that was responsive to the priorities that you all provided us, we asked them to start developing objectives and SMART goals for each one of those development areas. So to your question, Commissioner, this group was specifically tasked with bringing their professional perspectives. So we facilitated over 25 sessions with all these employees. It was a very large, very diverse, passionate group of employees who gave us a lot of good feedback. And they developed objectives for each development area, and you will see various levels of work towards the goal. Some of these development areas are more challenging than others, so the progress was a little different depending on the development area. So as a reminder, the development areas that you all provided us back in April were health and public safety, energy and environment, economic development, education, and growth and development. In a moment here, I'm going to pass it over to Heather to take over for the rest of the session. But something I would encourage you all to consider and to think about as you go through this session is, as you look at the community employee input, as well as the work of our development groups, consider, are these the development areas that you want to keep? You still have the opportunity to combine or collapse development areas if you want. This is a very flexible process, this is your plan. So we'll provide you with all the inputs, but you all can certainly change the development areas at this point if you want. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Heather, who's going to lead you all through a participatory work session.
Hi, good afternoon. How are you all doing? So Rafael walked you through the input that has taken place over the last month and change since we've been together. Where you all left us last time was with the development areas that he just showed you, those five development areas, and a list of ideas. I don't know if you remember, but we were up on this wall, talked through what you wanted to make sure we didn't forget, or what we needed to make sure was included. So I typed all of that up, I gave it to the development group participants, and they took that into consideration. So my goal for today is to walk you through what those groups have come up with in terms of objectives. So objectives are the higher-level general direction that would be included in a development area. And then some potential goals that have not been fully developed yet. But my goal is for you all to at least give us a green light on objectives that you want to see moved forward in the 2030 strategic plan. So you likely see some fun dots that I have there for you. I'll try to make it as interactive as possible. But I want to start with economic development. So what you see on this screen here is in bold, the bold bullets are the objectives. And then within each of those are some ideas around goals. I might let you do that for me. So we have increased opportunities and support for local workforce. The idea is that this would include goals around focus on incentive projects. That includes benefit skill training and employee programs. The group came up with an objective around increased business opportunities with Buncombe County. This would include internal county focus on increasing requests for proposals, or RFPs, and contracts with minority-owned businesses. Third objective is increase access to quality internet. Focus is on underserved areas of the county. And then the fourth objective is to increase economic opportunity in Buncombe County. The focus is on increasing the number of small businesses, wage rates, and minority homeownership. So curious to know your thoughts on what we have up here for objectives. Is there anything you find surprising?
Are we trying to narrow things at this point, or just?
We will in just a minute, yes. Are you already seeing something?
No, I'm just trying to orient my brain around what?
Yeah, it's a lot to digest, so I want to give you time to process what we have.
One thought. In terms of the increasing opportunities and support for local workforce, or workers, or however we want to use that language, you know, just as part of the process, I mean, one of the, have we had any, like focused meetings with, that are focused on like, we're wanting workers to come and participate to kind of, because in a way, I kind of think about this, but I don't necessarily feel like I necessarily know, like, here's what we ought to do, right? But I think, you know, just like we go out and we talk to businesses and we say like, hey, business community, like, what do you need? Like, what do we need to be working on here over the next few years? I think it would be very beneficial to have similar kind of focused input from workers in our community. Of course, our own county employees, for sure, and I think it sounds like we've done a great job on that. But if that's something we haven't done, I think that would be a good step in the process, just to kind of hear directly, you know, there are different organizations now that are kind of working on new initiatives, and it would be interesting to hear, like, you know, I'm not sure what the county's role in terms of supporting those might be, but it would be good to hear their perspective on it.
And I'd say some of that should be showing up in the community feedback that we have over here. So we have one area I see around economic development that we heard from the community. They said make it easier to start local business, less corporations, more business owners of color, stronger support of black businesses, more job options outside of the service industry, and less business silos, and then a focus on strengthening local businesses and supporting sustainable new programs to bolster the economy. So we have some feedback, but yes, I think I see what you're saying too, like, could we get, could we have more targeted outreach, maybe?
Yeah, I think like, in some ways, like when we've done, when we do kind of community involvement in the past, like there, like, in economic development realm, there's like certain constituencies that get kind of, we want their input, but I think we kind of, you know, don't always engage in the same way with like, the groups that represent kind of the worker's perspective in the community.
Okay.
And I really like number four, and I think it actually ties some in with some of the ones that you were reading as well. There are an increase in that economic opportunity, right? Increasing the number of small businesses, wage rates. And then can you just speak more, typically when we think about homeownership, we're often talking about it in relation to housing. So can you speak to why you included it here?
I cannot speak to that. I don't know if you happen to know Rafael.
He's one of our facilitators from the Economic Development Group. Lee, can he come up and speak to that? Lee Creighton facilitated that group, so he'll speak to it.
So the discussion for economic development around homeownership under this increased economic opportunity, homeownership is a way that people build wealth, right? And so I think that's where that conversation came into play, under if we want to increase economic opportunity and wealth opportunity, that homeownership is a way to do that.
Thank you. I think homeownership also shows up in our growth and development as well.
Right, that's where typically I would have thought of it, in that area. So I'm just curious what the process, the thought process?
It really shows up in generational wealth.
I think it's okay to have it in two places, particularly from our affordable housing goals of increasing BIPOC homeownership. It's not just affordable housing, so I think the more that we can figure out how these things interweave across topics, and whatever we're calling these beyond topics, I think makes sense. I think it gives us more of a reason to really address them, if we're seeing them show up in different areas.
And with the broad, or the internet, so that's focus on underserved or unserved areas? And you are just using underserved to encapsulate all of that? Okay.
I assume so. And, you know, the intent will be to have two to three goals within each of these objectives. So I assume there would be more than just that one focus, probably simply on just the increase piece of it increasing, or working with providers similar to what's been done over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts? So I pointed out the economic development example that came from the community, looking to see if we had anything. We do have one over here from employees around adopting a living wage and work to promote others to do the same, incentivize businesses to pay living wages and increase wages for county workers. Is there anything from either community or employee feedback that we need to consider in this economic development bucket that isn't already here?
I'm curious what business silos means. It says less business silos, I'm not sure I know what that means.
Bless you. Yeah, I'm not, I can infer that it probably means just finding more ways to increase communication among.
Cooperation amongst economic sectors, or whatever.
And so just to help us understand a little bit now, so with this, so the process is you're just wanting some feedback on these, and then the next, the feedback that we're giving you, you're going to kind of fine-tune? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
And so my hope today, what you will see, this one, you know, we have four objectives. The hope was to have two to three objectives per development area. And so what I'm going to ask you to do now, you teed it up perfectly, is to grab two dots that you have in front of you, and to put them next to the two objectives that you feel strongly need to move forward into the 2030 strategic plan. It doesn't mean that the others are necessarily off the table, we'll see how it shakes out. And then if we have any, you know, objectives that were not selected, but we want to make sure those goals move forward, then I have my coworkers who are taking notes, and we'll make sure that it gets included.
Okay.
So I'll invite you up to select your top two objectives.
As opposed to two dots for one bullet? Is that? Yeah?
Thank you.
I'm going to throw a wrench in this, Heather.
Go for it.
I think there is a way to collapse the increased business opportunities with Buncombe County into increasing economic opportunity. That if we're increasing small business, wage rates, that can we not include increasing RFPs into that as well? Because that would, to me, that ties into increasing economic opportunity. Or do we want to keep it separate for, to fall in line with our equity foundation?
I do think it can fall into equity foundation, and so doing business with Buncombe County is a part of increasing that.
I don't want to lose the focus of that, but I think maybe there's still a way to include it, even though it didn't get stickers.
If you included it here, you would need to clarify, right? Then that's focus on local businesses, because the way it's worded right now, that's not the case.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which is why I think the way it's worded now, it can focus in our equity work and our foundational work. So if you don't want to lose that, then we can put, fold that into how we do business from a finance and procurement perspective.
And I have been part of the foundational conversations, and this is, it's been brought up. It's definitely on the table right now, so we can make sure it's not lost.
Thank you.
Yes, that's wonderful. So what I see here are clearly, I said two to three. So I think as of right now, we move these three forward, unless you all see that differently. So if you're okay, I'll move this forward to education. Where the group landed with education is that they have four objectives. Enhance early learning, this includes providing pre-K support. Strengthen pathways to adulthood. This includes enhance opportunities for career paths. Support adult learning, includes adult literacy as well as lifelong learning. And holistically improve equity in education. This includes improving outcomes across demographic groups. We also have some feedback from the community around putting more resources into public schools to assist with students' academic success, increasing funding in public schools for teacher salaries and retention. And from employee feedback, support early childhood education, training staff, supporting childcare facilities in the community, enable, ensure access for low-income parents and families. We have affordable and diverse childcare services. And another one around education and teacher pay for K through 12. So anything that stands out to you, surprises you, or any questions that you have?
I think it's really interesting that the community feedback, affordable childcare, did not surface in this. I mean, I feel like everywhere I go, I hear from parents who are like, I can't find childcare, I've had to quit my job. And for this not to pop up, I think is interesting, and I have to go back and look at our demographics a little bit to see who participated in this.
It's because parents with little kids don't show up to those things.
They don't have time.
Right.
Majority of our participants were over the age of 35.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, Parker.
That's why they don't have time.
I just think that's really interesting to know.
They didn't have childcare, so they couldn't come in.
That's right, that's right.
So can you speak, there's a few questions I have, so, and maybe it's just the wording of the second one, the strengthen pathways to adulthood and opportunities for career pathing, it just... Can you speak more to that? And then like, if we end up going with that one, I feel like we should find language that people can relate to as well, because that just, it sounds kind of awkward.
My colleague Matt Baker was part of that group.
Yeah, so the education development focus area was, when speaking specifically to this, there were a lot of things that kind of go into there, that's just why the awkward wording. But one of the ones that came up was, there was a desire amongst a number of departments to get into the education system to promote and to advocate for public service. And it ranged from, you know, first responders, EMS, sheriff's office, to, you know, I think previously there was a business plan going, election services, getting folks out there. So it really was talking about broadly career pathing, but also as a way, as a segue into public service opportunities.
I really, I do like that idea, just maybe we can tweak the wording.
We can wordsmith anything.
And then the holistically improve equity in education, improve outcomes across demographic groups. So is that something we feel, I mean, that's something that we certainly want to see our schools working on and improving, but I guess?
Good gracious, yeah. With the achievement gap, wow.
Yeah.
And that's in both systems.
But I guess my question is, is that something actually?
That's achievable.
That's right, that we can track and do, like, really that seems, so just?
Influence that.
Can we influence that enough to where that should be one of these goals for us? That's my question.
It's a great question.
And we can track it from the state reports. I mean, you know.
But can we actually influence, because we're supposed to have things that we can measure and we can impact for these goals, right?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
So that's, that's my question.
I'd like to see us get to the point where we start controlling their money base on that. Maybe that would make them do something.
Any other surprises or questions?
I mean, the only thing I would say is that, like, this would be one that's very hard to take two of those things off, you know, because it's kind of like, are we not going to do the last one? Are we not going to do the first one? I feel like the first one and the fourth one are like, how can we not do that? But then, but then like, the one that it seems like would be sort of this area where maybe we would want to be doing more is around, like, what do we think in terms of like, career pathways? Like, that's an area that a lot of people are like, you know, hey, maybe, you know, maybe I'm not going back to college to get a four-year degree, but I do want to develop my skills. Like, that's just this area where there's like so much, you know, I think vitality going on in terms of where like local governments and our partners really can make a practical difference in people's lives, that I would really like to include that one, but I wouldn't include that one at the expense of the first one or the fourth one, which are just kind of like, seem very core to what we're about, you know? And that that's not, I don't think that's going to change.
The adult learning one, I also wonder if that ties into the, my future NC goals of the number of credentials. That has been put forward at the state level to bring that down to the county level, because that is potentially something that we could impact in supporting, under lifelong learning. I think sometimes when we think about lifelong learning, we think about taking a continuing ed class, but it could be a credential in order to get a job or a better job. And I used to work in this arena, and I used... And I used to work in this arena and I used to know these numbers. What, what do our adult literacy numbers look like across Buncombe County currently? Do we, I mean, and I don't need to know that right now, you can share it later, Matt. I'm just curious. I, I used to know that off the top of my head, but it's been a few years. Because if it's high, I think we would want to keep that in there. And I'm assuming that would include data on our ESOL population. Our non-native English speakers.
Maybe just, I'm sorry, just kind of, sort of a continuation of the previous thought. But you know, in terms of like, the career paths and stuff, I mean, in some ways, if we did all put a lot of support behind, like, workforce and workers, what we can do to support them, and a lot of it is, like, could be in these areas. So in some ways, that, that type, that kind of does get addressed in the economic development piece pretty strongly as well.
I would love to see Buncombe County get involved in some way, in some new way, in promoting the trades, plumbing and electrical work. I think is underutilized kind of area of academic learning.
I think if we.
I too, I don't know if I would vote for that over some, some of those other ones, so, yeah, I don't know.
If we would commit to supporting those, my future NC credentialing goals, that would get us on that same track for the trades. I agree.
Yeah.
And so Commissioner Newman, what I think I heard you say is it's possible that, that this, or at least the goal that we currently have within this, in that goal area, could fall under here somewhere.
Well, I, I mean, like, with Terry's comment, and I'm, I mean, I was glad to hear a little bit more of the context around, like, what, what does this strengthening pathways to adulthood, like, what does, what does that mean? Because, yeah, I mean, in some ways, of those two bullet points, like, the enhanced opportunities for career paths, like, that maybe kind of means something more particular to me, that's, that like resonates as like, yeah, a priority. But it, it is, it is kind of addressed in some ways, potentially through that piece in economic development too. So I guess if I had to choose two, I'm kind of wrapping my brain around, like, okay, maybe I'm willing to not put a vote on that one in this category. If we can address it in the economic development space.
I'm curious. Do you, with, with the last one, right? Because clearly, I mean, that's something we all care about and we want to see, right? And we don't have control over the schools and that. And I'm curious, do you see other ways beyond what the schools are doing? That there are ways that we can improve the outcomes across demographic areas? That, I guess, is my question. Is there something within our realm, right, that we can do to move the needle on that beyond what is happening within the schools?
You know, the way I look at that, Terry, we can't keep letting the schools off the hook. Why, they've got the kids there. They need to do their job. And, you know, it's good to, and not knocking you personally, I'm just going to tell where I'm coming from. It's good for, to look for the community and all. But still, they have those kids eight hours a day or whenever. It's time for them to do their jobs, and they're not doing it. When I go to school and see a little black kid sitting in a corner, and as long as he's quiet, nobody's paying him any attention. Go forward to the 12th grade, that kid will get a diploma and can't fill out a application. That's going on all the time. And not just black kids, poor white kids, especially, I mean, it's going on in our schools. But we can't let them off the hook. I mean, that's the problem I have with it, and we've been doing it for too long. We can't say enough about that. And as a taxpayer, I feel, no. You know, what am I paying taxes for? And in the city, I'm paying double. We have that other tax, special tax. And I get nothing for my money, really. That's another issue.
Well, I think that equity in education, by supporting pre-K from the very beginning, it starts to help address that. Looking at the adult literacy component, that also addresses equity. So many of the adult learners were not well-served by traditional public education, and so they're behind as adults. So in my mind, I can view that equity in education much broader than just our K-12 systems. But looking at each of those, and if we're not addressing equity in education in this way, I think it also ties back to that economic development of then being able to support BIPOC owned businesses, minority homeownership. We have to have, our residents across Buncombe County have to be well-educated and supported in all arenas in order to reach that ultimate goal of homeownership and higher wages.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was going to tell you that the way that we can impact it will be before and after school, sort of pre-K and then the after school. So that's where we would have to put our investments, because we really don't control what happens between that type, the time in class. The eight hours or however long you're staying in class, but before class and after class. And we can also work more around our justice systems, because we know that the kids that get in trouble, how to be approached that. So there's space that we can work on, actually influence the equity in education needs outside just the teaching part.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? It's a great conversation. And I think you're asking the right questions too, around impact and is it in the right place? Is a question that I have, you know? Are these lining up appropriately? So.
You know, the, the other, the other, from the, from the, like, the list of comments that came in, you know, the item number six on education and teacher pay talks about, you know, increasing pay for educators and other public school employees. So, you know, that's certainly resonates with me as a high priority too. And I guess I would just, I know we're not going to get everything in these, like, top, you know, bullet lines or headlines or whatever, but I do, I do think that, you know, this idea that we talked about in terms of like, multi-year planning and like, basically kind of, you know, giving our public employees, I'm thinking of the education space here specifically, but it could apply elsewhere. It's like, I mean, right now, all they kind of know is like, like, what we're going to do in this budget. That's all they know, right? So I think it would be, if we want to attract and retain great people to work in the schools, like, being able to present, like, now, here's where we're going to go over the next three to five years. And I know all the caveats exist around future county commissions, you know, make their own decisions. But I think kind of defining like, what, you know, what that, what that looks like, you know? And, and being able to sort of say, this is the plan that we want to follow. I think, I think that would be, I think that could really contribute to that as opposed to just this annual process that we sort of work through currently, so.
And are you thinking that that is potentially a, a goal area somewhere in the, the last objective or?
I mean, if I had to, if I had to put it in one of these, under one of these headlines, I guess it would be under the holistically improving equity in education. Although, again, that's, you know, I really feel like that's going towards different concerns. But, I mean, at the end of the, at the end of the, I mean, it would, so it would probably have to be kind of like a different, a different.
Different bullet.
Different bullet. But it's basically around the idea that like, as far as, you know, I have understood around these issues, like, the single most powerful predictor of like, the success in schools is the quality of the teacher in the classroom, right? That there's all these different things that influence it, but that's the number one. And so we want to keep the best people in this profession. Yeah, you know, they're not all doing it to get rich, but like, defining a longer-term plan around what the compensation looks like from the local level. We can't control what the state's going to do, but we, to, to a large degree, we can control what we're going to do at the local level. So sort of, basically, if I had to put it, like, supporting a multi-year, you know, kind of budgeting process to define what compensation and financial benefits will be for public school employees would be something I would. I mean, it would be, it would be an easier kind of headline to hang this under than, than any of these are. But, I mean, I'm not trying to take any of these away, I think they're all good.
I'm going to add it.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's really at the heart of multi-year budget planning.
It's multi-year budget planning. But with, since the vast majority of that funding goes to pay the people who do the work, that's what it can turn into. It's like a multi-year plan for.
Yeah.
How we support public.
If we're going to keep this on here, I think we have to think about, I think we have to say school employees.
Agreed.
I think it says teachers. Has to, I think, be broader.
Agreed.
What are you thinking?
School employees.
For this one? Okay.
Versus teaching staff.
You could just put staff, yeah, that would be fine for right now.
Okay, yeah.
Public school staff, public school employees. Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other thoughts? How are you feeling about that?
I mean, part of like, what I wonder too is like, when we think about some of these different pieces, like, I don't see the commission reducing its support for pre-K, right? But in a way, like, I think that support's pretty embedded in what we're doing. So, I mean, are we talking about the things that we want to, like, focus on in a new way? Or just kind of, are we just sort of reiterating our support for sort of what we're doing?
Well, it's a strategic plan, right? And I know everything goes back to this strategic plan, so if we don't put it in there at some point, it will be brought up. That was, it's not part of our strategic plan.
Our role calls it our North Star. It guides us in budgeting decisions, staffing decisions.
She's not going to update us on something that's not in there, unless for now.
I don't disagree with the last bullet at all. However, we cannot continue to take the responsibility of what the North Carolina General Assembly is constitutionally required to do, which is fully fund our public education, K-12 schools. And I think when we continue to take that onus off of them, the less likely they are going to be to do the job that they're constitutionally required to do. Not saying we should not, but I don't want to give anyone that sits in the legislature the opportunity to say, hmm, counties are funding this, we don't have to. Just going to, you're going to be tired of hearing me say that. But I think we've all, we've forgotten over the years who's supposed to be.
So do you all feel like you're in a good place to try to narrow this down? And we can narrow down with the dots again, if you want. We could also collapse if that's something you'd prefer.
The one final question, so, Brownie, I think you said, so the strengthen, the enhancing the career path, you're kind of feeling like we could do that potentially under, with like, a bullet point, under the economic.
Workforce development.
Workforce development, some of that. Because I do, I do think that's important. And I'm out in the schools and I, I think there's a need for that, and certainly for, for us too, for our future workforce. I think that's useful. I just wanted to make sure we don't lose it if I want to have to narrow it down to two.
I think so. I think, I think I'm, you know, I think I'm going to like, not vote for that in this category, because I think it can be done through this pathway over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you all like me to go ahead and move it? If I have consensus, yeah? Move it here for now, is that? Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'd like to invite you up to place two dots on your top two objectives you'd like to see moved forward. Okay, so holistically improve equity in education, enhance early learning are the top two. The, the next would be this increase, retain quality, public school staff, including multi-year budgeting. Fourth one is supporting adult learning, which includes adult literacy and lifelong learning. What are you thinking? So if we were to move three forward, it would be these three. Do we need to make sure we don't lose the adult literacy and lifelong learning? At least the, yeah, the, that goal or those goal buckets? We can ask the development group to work to include it elsewhere if needed.
I think if we want to discuss wages, then maybe it's going to be an economic development issue. But, I mean, lifelong learning, credentialing, increasing the ability to speak the English language, to increase adult literacy, to receive GED in order to get a job. There, there are ramifications across the, the economy by not having a highly educated adult workforce.
And really, the multi-year budget, I mean, isn't that something that we can address at a different level in our budget process?
We can just do it.
Yeah.
Right, like, it doesn't need to be in the strategic.
It doesn't have to be in the strategic plan, it's, it's just.
I agree. Put a, put a dot on it.
So noted. So are we good with putting support adult?
Learning.
Learning up there as?
And you know what's possible is that we could, we could almost collapse these two. So it's, you know, enhance countywide learning or something. And then there's a goal around providing pre-K support and a goal around the adult literacy and one around adult.
That's a good point.
Like, it's possible if you all are, don't want to lose it.
I, I, I think I agree. I agree parking lots. I agree more with them that we could work through that with a budget. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll move us forward. So this next one is a big one. It's health and public safety. Yes. And it's even smaller than I thought it would be up there. So the, we have five objectives in health and public safety. And you do have it on the printout in front of you, if that's easier to read. We have increased coordination and resilience of public health and safety services. Goal areas are pretty extensive around reducing jail population, faster law enforcement officer and emergency service response time, increasing number of people reached by existing county resources. The second objective is to increase holistic prevention efforts to create a safer community. This includes potentially reduction in the percentage of BIPOC children entering the foster care system. So we were bringing in social work staff, behavioral health staff, who had ideas around reduction in behavioral health-related crime, reducing the number of arrests, and reducing the number of pre-trial technical violations. Third objective is to increase equitable access to physical, mental, and behavioral health and safety resources. This includes some public health data around vaccination rates, STI rates, suicide rates, substance abuse. substance abuse, reduced demand on 911 system. Fourth objective is to enhance the county's commitment to uplifting person-centered options to support well-being. Includes a potential goal of disparity of access to community-based services based on location. And regardless of housing status, reduced recidivism in HHS, public safety and criminal justice programs, improved experience of belonging, wel- welcoming and acceptance among BIPOC individuals in the county, decrease in unmet behavioral health needs and associated public challenges. And then, last but not least, the fifth objective is to enhance health and safety, public safety program sustainability through increased support for frontline workers' health and well-being. And this one includes specific goals or would include specific goals around retention rates, employee satisfaction, absenteeism, et cetera. So there's a lot to digest here.
Well, just comment reaction I have that it's, it's embedded in the first bullet, something I'd love to see mentioned in the strategic plan, no matter how small the font is, our community paramedic program. Just so it's like in there.
So including a potential goal around community paramedics?
That's sort of standard of goal, I think, again, I think it's part of one or two of these. I just want to see that phrase in there, so.
Noted.
You're calling out one specific staff over others, or what are you trying to accomplish with that phrase?
Just to include that program as, if we were, say, to choose the first bullet, I think that is an important component of achieving that bullet. Not to play favorites over staff departments, I see where you're getting at.
Right.
It's a, it's a, it's a new initiative that we've fostered over time.
Is it that you're just wanting to make sure the community is aware that we're doing that and has a better understanding? Is that part of it?
Sure, I mean, yeah, that's always the goal.
So that might be, I mean, maybe we can achieve that.
Could we not achieve that under bullet three with decreased substance use related deaths, decreased suicide, reduced demand on 911 system?
Yeah, that's probably, that's what that is, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there is a lot here. So one question on the last bullet, do we have any current data on the retention rates? With that, since this has to do with retention of employees?
That's the next step in the process. So after we go from this session, we'll be sitting down with the subject metrics, we'll just pull that data. And the next time we come and interact with you all, we'll provide you options for what we believe is realistical, realistic to achieve.
I guess the reason I'm asking, I have to narrow it down to two. And so knowing where we are with that would help me be able to make a decision on, does I only get to choose?
So commissioners, one thing I want to put in the room is, this is such a big area that I think this is one area that we should break into two. We should have a goal for health, public health, and a goal for public safety. As you look at this, there's so much we're trying to mesh together. And it's truly two separate topics that we should talk about. So I'll leave y'all to think through that. But I really do think that is a large group that we should think about separating.
Almost like an HHS kind of bucket.
Yeah.
Everything else, yeah, yeah. I agree with that.
Because the other reality is, you know, once the strategic plan is in place and we are asking staff to help move the needle, pulling this many people into the room, it starts to, it can water down, you know, who can be there and creates, it, it, it has created some challenges, to be quite honest with, just, yeah, just the current work and.
See what you mean.
Yeah.
I will say, I'm supportive of breaking this into two buckets because I, when I was looking over it, I was like, there's just, yeah, there's a.
A hell.
Yes, there's a lot there.
There's a lot to.
On the last one, when we're talking about the turnover, high turnover and, and the other concerns listed, is this in reference to county employees? Or the broader set of community members who work in like these health and safety-related fields?
We're gonna have Kathleen Blackney, who facilitated the group, come up and speak to that.
She says it's broader.
Okay. Okay, which, which, I mean, that's, that's, that's good. I do kind of wonder, like, how, how does the county help with, you know, turnover rates for employees who don't work for Buncombe County? I, I'm sure it's a telltale valid concern, but it's, I do wonder what role we would have beyond our own employees who work in the arena.
What impact or how we can, yeah, how we can actually impact that?
Yeah.
It's a good question.
I mean, um. Support nurses.
You're not right.
Go to nurses' rallies. So. So I will, I think there's, you know, people are expressing support for your idea of breaking this out. But this is the list we have in front of us right now. So what do you recommend we do with the, kind of the?
Or how do we want to do that?
Yeah, this one's, this one's been, it, it's a little bit of a challenge. And it's intertwined at this point. So I wonder if it's just something that we
To bring back.
We've got to work on and bring back in August. I think what we could
Don't hurt your brain.
Talk through is, you know, if there, if there is anything, you know, Commissioner Sloan, you had brought up, you know, something specific that you wanted to see in there. If there is anything else that you feel is missing, it would be helpful if you let us know at this point. And I can document it.
Yeah, so we'll think through how to break it apart. But Commissioner Sloan, to your question on community paramedics, we do support it. So if that's an opportunity for us to say how we would decrease demand on 911 versus operations, instead of calling out a specific, because right now you don't have a specific program up there.
Right.
How we come back with the department goals and what we can do would help to shape what we would say there.
The goals to accomplish the things in there, yeah, yeah, I see. What, yeah, what I was describing is a tool that you use to accomplish that.
Right.
To see what you're saying.
Okay, I'll move us forward if y'all are okay with that.
We'll come back to some of the alternatives, how do we work it out?
All right, so now we're on energy and environment. We have four objectives here. First objective is to preserve the agricultural heritage of Buncombe County. This includes farmland preservation succession. Second objective is to prioritize the protection of natural resources. This includes conservation easements, investing in code enforcement, and composting facilities. Third is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This includes fleet electrification, waste diversion, and home weatherization programs. And then, last but not least, the fourth one is to increase hazard mitigation and disaster preparedness to support a climate resilient community. This includes equitable hazard mitigation plan and monitoring investments. Anything that's surprising or that you're happy to see up here?
The main way that we protect farmland is through the conservation easement strategy primarily. So it does seem like that's, that main bullet point there really is associated with the first, first headline, not the second one.
Okay, conservation easements under preserving.
Yeah.
I think that came from staff and I think I know what they're working on. But I do think, because, right, several of these are needed, so it's gonna be tough. The, before, I think our old way of saying it was what preserve farmland and environmentally sensitive tracts, which you're kind of doing with both of those first two. I think what was, the, staff is looking at other ways to help support farms. And I think that's what they were talking about with the succession planning, is making sure that there's other things in place. And so I think that's around, kind of, I would argue that that's not really necessarily just agriculture heritage. That's like the future of ag and being able to have viable ag, which would be broader. But to Brownie's point, you know, I do think there's a way to put those two together.
So the first two objectives potentially go together? Okay.
Because, yeah, those easements are preserving like the prime soils, right? And doing the natural resource protection along the waterways. But I do know there's interest, and maybe there's a way then they can break down within that category and look at some of the other things they're interested in doing as well.
Yeah, that makes sense.
This is just a comment, but just, I'll just lobby for this. So if you gotta choose between three and four, like, I'm definitely gonna support the third one. You know, we should definitely plan for like more severe storms, like we should not build things in floodplains, like, right? Like, that's, there's gonna be, we're gonna have more flooding. We're gonna have some fires in places that did not traditionally see so many fires. So that's, that's true. But if you have to choose between averting climate impacts or learning to live with them better, like, you definitely want to avert as much as possible. And then we're gonna have to live with some. So I'm just putting it out there that I think, like, when people look back in the future and be like, you know, I think they'll be like, they should have, they should have just avoided this problem to the maximum extent possible and then live with what you gotta live with. So that's my two cents on if we have to pick one of those two, which I think we will.
I think it's a both and.
I was gonna say, yeah, isn't there a way with that?
Well, I, I love them both. I'm just saying, if, if we only get two, if we only get two choices on this list, and I assume we're gonna do something on like natural resources and farmland, right? So then that leaves you with like choosing one of these last two.
So, yeah.
But if we can merge them, I mean, I'm.
Combine the first two and combine the second two. And we've got it.
Hey.
So we can move two or three forward?
Yeah, we said two or three.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought we had to only choose two out of each list. I thought, I thought the directive was that from the list, that only two bullet points would advance. Is that not correct?
So look at education.
I mean, I know we've, are we, are we kind of deviating from that now?
So each of you.
We last.
Okay.
So each of you gets.
I'm still trying to follow the rules here.
Yeah, so each of you gets two dots and the math, our assumption was mathematically that would lead to three top issues moving forward.
Okay, well, done.
So if you look.
So yes, I do think we end up with three. What I would like you to consider is if there's anything up here from community feedback that we need to be mindful of or include. We have environmental conservation, renewable energy, you know, encouraging solar panels, charging stations. We've got some of that, cleaner air and water, protection from environmental hazards, including storms, and promoting solar programs, encouraging preservation of natural environment, and limiting plastic bags. That's on community feedback. Over here, improving greenway connectivity for better access to parks and green spaces. I'm thinking that could also go in growth and development, isn't greenways in there? And then better recycling.
Most of those fit within these.
Just want to make sure. And so are you, I think I've heard that you all are good with these three and four.
That's fine.
You're making it very easy.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't even have to put up our.
We can save the stick.
We can save them for something else. So that leaves us with
What's left?
Growth and development. We only have three objectives here. Enhance transportation opportunities through partnerships emphasizing the need of underserved and BIPOC communities. That includes potential goals around mass transportation, greater access to mass transportation. Second objective is to incentivize a diversity of housing as a foundation for affordable, healthy, and thriving communities, particularly for the most vulnerable residents. This one would include potential goals around addressing housing burden issues, housing cost burden issues. And then the third is to maximize the use of land, guiding development to targeted growth areas that lead to resilient communities. This would include potential goals, goals around responsible and effective development strategies. So this one is transportation, housing.
How does that tie into our comp plan?
So we had the planning department involved in the growth and development, and they had their comp plan with them. So from, we worked with Nate Pennington to ensure that, from his perspective, it was in line with where he saw progress in the next five years.
Adding more to that, this complements.
Correct.
Follow-up question to that, because I wondered that as well. So I, I was looking at, especially, well, I just got started, the one on the transportation. And so within the transportation goals, right, it does talk about, we'll leverage regional partnerships to improve transportation system, reduce single passenger vehicle miles, and go on. And so I guess that's part of what I'm wondering, like, wouldn't we want it really to tie in very well with the comp plan? Do you feel like this goal ties in with that directly?
Because it uses different language.
Yeah, it just like, yeah.
Yeah.
So this was, this was discussed explicitly in the conversation with planning about how do we bring the comp plan into the strategic plan? And that is exactly where planning wants to see that or would like to see that. When you talk about targeted growth areas, in the comprehensive plan, we have the growth, equity, and conservation map. And then on that map, there are overlays that lay out areas in the county where, according to the comprehensive plan, the county has already said we want to see further development in those areas and not in others. By including this as an objective here, there was discussion around a goal as well of saying something like maybe 50% of new development will be targeted in those development areas. And we want to see less than 50% of others. That's something that's still being discussed. We obviously want to have commissioner input on what that specific goal might look like. But this is where we would see the, that map being used in the strategic plan. Hope that answers your question.
And then I guess, well, around the transportation. So I think our previous goal, where we'd all agreed was good, was right. Affordable, well, actually, it was affordable housing near jobs and transportation. And then y'all feel that this still, I mean, is that still a focus? I just wanted to make sure because we'd all agreed when we did this first assessment that having housing near jobs and transportation was a focus. Do you feel like this is capturing that?
Yeah, I mean, especially if you do the second and the third, it does.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, just, the, the second one in and of itself doesn't necessarily, it's just kind of like, we need housing if it doesn't kind of talk about. Where does it make the most sense to focus it, right? Everybody vote.
I guess they're all gonna make it.
Yeah, there's three.
Unless you feel that there's something that needs to be removed. At this point, all three could move forward on this one. And for me, it's more a matter of, is something missing or does something need to be tweaked? And I do want to point out, we have, I think we do have quite a lot of feedback from the community on growth and development around affordable housing and cost. from the community on growth and development around affordable housing and cost of living. I think that's captured transportation, public transport, specifically around traffic congestion, road planning, alternate forms of transportation. Land use and zoning, protecting mobile home parks from redevelopment displacement, upgrading public utilities to accommodate population growth, implementing smart strategies to manage development responsibly. I think this one down here was maybe a mix. It just encompasses transportation, I believe. Let me see what else I'm missing. Another around affordable housing, increasing affordable homeownership for BIPOC folks, better public transport, more bus routes, better parking, more charging stations, expanding bus system, and provide budgets that will support development, ingenuity of safe and secure housing for homeless population and around homelessness. So taking all of that into consideration, is there anything that we need to take back to the development group to add into the mix?
I do have a question. There were two other items that we, were in our original plan that we had all agreed should still be reflected in this plan. And so that, that we haven't already talked about. One was suspend and maintain cultural recreation assets, and the other was protect older residents' ability to age in place.
I think that aging.
That came from our last.
Yeah, those were, yeah, you know, when they had us all say whether we wanted to stay in. So, and those were, those were two of the ones that we had all said, yes, we felt it needed to be reflected. And I just didn't clearly see that.
Yeah, so one op, one option to consider is now that public safety and health has been split, there's the opportunity to take those two items and ask those development groups to attempt to put it there.
I think there's a component of aging in place in growth and development with housing cost burden that we want to keep folks who are, who are over living in their homes. So I think there's some components of that to not overlook in the housing piece.
And that was a conversation that group did have. And one of the things they talked about was, you know, we've asked them to think about everything from an equity lens. So one of the conversations that group was is, when you look at housing burden affordability, looking at affordability and burden not just for BIPOC populations, as well as our aging populations. So they were hoping to reflect that in the SMART goals.
Thanks, Raphael.
So, yeah, so the aging in place could, could certainly fit, you know, within that second objective. Potentially, it could also fit under health. The first one. Recreation. I did note that, I thought we had something around, I'm thinking specifically around greenways. And I, I don't know that I see anything up here. So if that's something we need to take back to the development group and ask that it's a goal that fits somewhere or they consider it, you know, in a new objective. That's a question, I guess. Oh, James.
If I may, in this, in this growth and development group, regarding the enhanced transportation opportunities, greenways and sidewalks were discussed as a goal. Thank you. Were discussed as a potential goal, with there being some sort of goal around building or connecting X number of linear feet of greenways and sidewalks in the county. So that was certainly considered. So when we think about providing greater access to mass transportation, you know, we talked a little bit about there maybe being a goal around decreasing single passenger commuters in the county. And there's potential goals to set around that, around, or how much, how, how connected are our greenways? How many linear feet or miles of greenways do we have that people are actually able to use to get around our communities? So this is something that was already discussed in that enhanced transportation opportunities section.
And I'm just, so I appreciate that. And, and I, when I think of recreational assets, I do think beyond greenways for us, right? And so maybe it could be potentially with health, somewhere within there as well, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great point, parks and pools and lots of things.
Splash pads.
Thank you for bringing up that that was, those are missing though. That's something that's been in the back of my mind, just making sure that we, we haven't forgotten something. So this is a good exercise. Any other thoughts on this last development area?
The last bullet makes me think of sprawl and avoiding sprawl, reducing sprawl. Is that, is that fair to whoever wrote it?
I'd have to bring back up my.
Civil says yes, I'll take it.
I, I, I would say yes, I would agree with Civil. If we look, we don't have it available, but in the comprehensive plan, there is the GEC, the growth equity and conservation map that commission, the board of commissioners has already voted on. This is our 20-year comprehensive plan, and we want to see growth happen in those specific communities. I can't think of what they specifically are, I have a picture of the map in my head. But that's where we want to see growth, so that implies that we want to have conservation efforts focused in the other areas of the county.
You know, I, I mean, I definitely am gonna support that third, that third one. I mean, part of, part of what I, comes to mind for me with that, I mean, a lot of our comp plan focus, of course, is on the, was on the areas where we have direct land use jurisdiction, right? So like the municipalities were sort of these.
Gray blobs.
Yeah. Undiscussed areas on the map. And, and I, you know, and I get we don't have the juris, we don't have the land use jurisdiction there. But, I mean, I think, I think like the redevelopment we're doing on the public land that the county owns is one of the coolest things that we're doing. I think we're gonna see, I think these are all gonna be great projects, Cox Avenue, Ferry Road. They're gonna, you know, long, difficult processes, but I think they're gonna be really amazing. And, and I think those were absolutely, like, when we start thinking about you, kind of redeveloping, underutilized publicly owned land, those were the right places to start, because we've got total control over them, right? As those projects get done, I think there's just lots of opportunities to do, to do more. I mean, you just, you look at, you know, you look at the amount of land in Asheville that's under like public, under some form of public ownership, it's extensive. And a lot of it is frankly totally underutilized, right? And so I think, I think as we sort of, you know, kind of prove how some of these redevelopment efforts can really work, then, you know, maybe, maybe they become kind of a model for redeveloping, in partnership with other public agencies, some of these other existing public lands that are totally in the parts of the community where people would say, if we're gonna have growth, like, put it in here, don't put it out on the farmland, don't put it on the mountainside. So anyway, I just, I wanted to mention that because I'm definitely supportive of the areas identified in the comp plan as growth areas, but I, you know, but we didn't spend a lot of time talking about the, what we can do to support great growth in, in, in some of the areas that are in existing municipal limits. What else?
Good thoughts.
Ready to?
So I don't even think.
We don't have to vote.
Unless you all feel that this needs to be narrowed down, we're okay to move three forward for this one.
I mean, the only other, like, just comment I would make on this, I'm not gonna vote to like take it off the list, but like, in terms of like the mass transportation, you know, we, we provide a lot of important services in that space already. I think when a lot of people in our community talk about these issues, they're talking about things that mostly have to do with the Asheville Transit System, which is, you know, by far the largest kind of fixed route system in the community. So not necessarily like some big expansion of the different things that kind of are in our current wheelhouse. I'm just, I'm just kind of, I don't know. Like, like, we're not, like, we're not working on anything right now, right? Like, when I think about that space, that's like big initiatives, like, that would fall in that. So I'm just, like, if we're basically saying like, hey, community, we want you to know the biggest things that are on our mind, like, I'm just kind of like, these other areas, like, we just did this big comp plan. Like, obviously, we're doing a ton of stuff with affordable housing, so are we, like, what's, what's, what are we gonna do there? I guess this is kind of the question that's coming to mind. Like, there's been, you know, there's been, this is a, there's been a community lobbying effort around us investing in some more public transit routes this year in our budget. I think they're great projects, and we all know it's a very tough budget year. But like, I mean, honestly, they've gotten very little traction, right? So I'm just saying, like, are we identifying, are we now identifying this as a top priority when, when we are sitting here and like there are ideas on the table and they're, they're not being elevated as top priority? So I just, I mean, if we're, if we're really gonna like say, Avril, go do these things, like, I'm just, I'm not sure what we mean by that top one.
That's a great point. Can, can someone elaborate more on what the thought was specifically behind that one?
And what if we were to broaden it to be more, less specific about buses, more general about like multi-modal transportation options, you know, something like that?
Brad?
Yeah, so we had a lot of discussion on transit and transportation, both infrastructure and kind of active, things like the art. And so I, this is a current project trying to connect different parts of the community and trying to, you know, establish more routes with mountain mobility out to places either with consistency. There's a, there's an intention to have a direct from Asheville to Henderson or Buncombe to Henderson County line on mountain mobility that connects to one of theirs, so people can travel much farther. Some of the intent here too is from a public input side is tempering what we do have, you know, what we know we have impact and control on. And that's always difficult reading those, and getting that feedback is trying to parse where our authority and influence stops. And so trying to bring that to the development group has been tricky as well. Also, there's also been a lot of emphasis on trying to get creative. You know, there is this demand, it feels like, there's this demand for transit or transportation, and we know we don't have that active authority to do it. So what can we do that is creative? What can we kind of affect in a roundabout way? And so it was brought up a lot, and there's a lot of underserved communities that feel like they can't connect to services, to opportunities for employment. And so this, this keeps coming out as that barrier in that conversation.
I mean, you know, we had the community transit discussion at one of the recent commission meetings. I think that's great, I'm glad we're doing that. I mean, there are definitely all these innovative things happening in the space, and I think that'll continue over the next few years with technology in the transportation arena. I just raise it as a question because one of the things I have learned, because this issue in particular, is like, I don't think we want to set some kind of false expectations about where we're going. Because I think we've sort of seen that happen in this community around this specific issue sometimes before, and I think it just leaves people sort of disappointed. So it's part of why I wanted to ask about it, like, so we don't run the art system, right? We've talked about trying to do more coordination and things like that. But, so I appreciate the additional context there.
And to your point, Brownie, then we need to be more intentional when we put the measures beneath the headlines. So once we get into what the specific goals and objectives are, we need to be more intentional and not just say mass transit, but what do we control, to Terry's point earlier, what can we influence? We would be more specific about multi-mobility, or if it is more greenways and sidewalks and not multi-modal paths, what does that really look like? So we call that out specifically.
Okay.
What we could do, if you'd like, is I can let you vote on your top two out of these three, and then we consider those the priority objectives, the top two as a priority if, if it shakes out that way. And then we take that back to the group. How does that feel?
Do you want to vote?
Okay.
I'm finding the right.
I'll invite you up to place two dots on your top two objectives for growth and development. So we ended up with the, these two around development and housing being our two priorities. So how are you all feeling about the work that we've done? What we've done is we've, we have narrowed down the list of objectives and some of the goals, talked through some of the goals. We've talked through community and employee feedback. There was a consensus around splitting out health and public safety, so we would end up with six development areas. And what we will do is take all of this back, including notes back to the groups that have been working in these areas, what I call the subject matter experts within the county, and ask them to continue this work based on the conversation we've had today. The, what we intend to do is in August, we will come back to you all, early August, and plan to have a list of what I call SMART goals, an option of goals for you to look through. They will be realistic, based on what staff anticipate being, items that they can achieve, right? That we have, we are saying that we have to have a data source if we're going to put it in the strategic plans and making sure we've got a data source and we have a realistic target that's hopefully a little bit of a stretch. Trying to move the county forward in a positive way. Then we will be coming back to you all at the end of August, or towards the end of August, on the 22nd for a retreat. At that retreat, I anticipate that you will get to see a pretty final draft of the plan. We'll be taking the feedback from earlier in the month and continuing to refine it. What will happen on the heels of that is getting more input from the community, asking if they're feeling good about the direction that we're going in. And then we continue with more review and a final vote at the end of the year. Any questions about this process?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any lingering thoughts that you're, you were hoping we would talk through today? All right, well, thank you for your time, as always. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We were gonna recognize the U.S.R. team that was deployed to Vermont and Texas earlier.
Yeah.
And I would love to move those ahead, public comment. We have a couple of presentations too, and it's public comment that might be long tonight, not just the public here, but the public comment. There's several people already signed up for public comment. So if you want to do the presentations ahead of that, people are gonna come and present, that's fine. But what I really would love to do is to move the, the U.S.R. recognition earlier.
That sounds fun.
So they can get back in the field and do whatever.